Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, November 12th, 2024. We will open with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Ward, followed with the invocation by Commissioner Truman Tinsley III. Please join us.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most gracious heaven and father, we're here today to ask for your blessings and guidance in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize since all the problems that are presented, make our solutions fair and just to the best interests of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep you united as a team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you. And since we just had Veterans Day yesterday, if we have any veterans in the room, if you would please stand to be recognized. Do we have any veterans here tonight? Thank you very much. All right, moving into presentations and delegations, we will recognize Jenna Evans, wastewater operator, as the October 2024 Strongest Link in the Chain Award recipient. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Ms. Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Seven zero. Thank you. So at this time, we will recognize Jenna Evans, wastewater operator, as the October 2024 Strongest Link in the Chain Award recipient. Brandon Lewis, water wastewater director, will address. Good evening, sir, and welcome.
We decided to nominate Jenna for this award for her work in the wastewater lab. So Jenna has been with us for three years. Yeah, that's, I was not thinking it was that long, but anyway.
Miss Jenna, come on up.
Yeah, three years, and she started out as a lab analyst and has recent, well, within about a year, has moved over to wastewater operations. While she was in wastewater operations, she backfilled our lab manager role, which is crucial because that role has a lot to do with our industrial pretreatment program and ensuring that that program's in compliance. And there was a period of time of about three months where we relied heavily on Jenna, who was willing to step away from her career path objectives and operations and help us out in the lab. And we couldn't have made it that time and kept everything going, all the boxes checked like we need to, without her assistance. So we were greatly indebted to her.
Congratulations, Jenna. We appreciate you. Do you have any family or friends here you'd like to recognize?
I do have a parent. They didn't want to write her, so I was calling them to tell you others.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for your service. And have they let you go back to Shoal Creek yet, or are you still stuck at testing water samples?
I'm at Shoal Creek now, yes.
Congratulations. Well, thank you so much for your service. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lewis, thank you and your team for nominating her this year. Next item is to present a proclamation commemorating Retired Educators' Day and recognize the valuable contributions of retired educators. I believe Ms. Anne Clark is here this evening, so I'd love for you to join us up front.
How are you today?
Thank you. How are you?
My wife's a teacher. She counts today to be retired educator like you, but thank you so much for your service. Right. So proclamation commemorating Retired Educators' Day, whereas the governor of the state of Georgia has proclaimed Sunday, November 3rd, 2024 as Retired Educators' Day in Georgia, whereas there are more than 145,000 retired educators in Georgia, more than 33,000 of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association. Whereas retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service, their talents to the cause of public education, and their efforts to provide academic development and invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across our state. And whereas because the citizens of Griffin, Georgia are grateful for the work done by retired educators, it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the valuable contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make, for the betterment of human lives and for society. And whereas local churches, civic groups, governmental entities, and community leadership seek to recognize those lasting contributions made here by retired educators, whose altruistic objective is ultimately to leave our society better than they found it. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the day of November 3rd, 2024 as Retired Educators' Day and calls upon the citizens of the City of Griffin to observe the day in an appropriate manner honoring retired educators. In witness hereof, I have herein to set my, the hand and cause the seal of the City of Griffin to be affixed to this proclamation, the 3rd day of November 2024, in the City of Griffin, Retired Educators' Day. Signed Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor, Jessica W. O'Connor, City Manager. So congratulations. And would you like to say a few words before we get a picture? Do you do?
Just thank you all so much for the proclamation. And retired educators do play a vital role in this community, and we do put in a lot of volunteer hours. Even though we are retired, we still work.
So we can go and have a picture with him for? And we're going to look at this fine young man?
Thank you.
Finance Director Deborah Manning Gilbert will address. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm going to talk about September financials tonight.
Okay.
That is 25% into our fiscal year. The general fund has recorded $4.4 million in revenue, which is 17.6% of the budgeted amount, and 9.3 million in expenses, which is 25.1% of the budgeted amount. Our enterprise funds have recorded $33 million in revenue, which is 29.7% of our budgeted amount, $21.4 million in expenses, or 22.7% of the budgeted amount. Water wastewater has $8.6 million in revenue, which is 28.6% of their budget, $4.2 million in expenses, which is 20.1% of their budget. Electric has $20.3 million in revenue, which is 31.1% of their budget, and $14.1 million in expenses, which is 24.9% of their budget. Solid waste has recorded $2.7 million in revenue, which is 25.7% of their budget, and $2 million in expenses, which is 18.5% of their budget. Lost collections year-to-date, $1,425,232, which is 25.9% of the budget, and TSP lost is $1,135,310, or 30.4% of the budget.
Thank you. If there's any questions from the board members?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the report tonight. This time, we'll go into citizen comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing, or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. Subject to the citizens' comment policy adopted on February 13, 2024, and posted for public view, all speakers shall be limited to three minutes, which will be strictly followed and enforced. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business, and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side like to come before the board? Anybody on my left side? Is there anybody on my right side like to come before the board? Okay. Moving into the consent agenda, we have items four through 13. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, before you do that, if I can make a comment on item 12.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, on item 11.
Yes, ma'am.
I did not notice that we have to amend the budget accordingly. Well, okay, mine's different. On item, on your item 12.
Okay.
Amend the budget accordingly. We normally do not put those in consent. You're certainly welcome to, but I wanted to make sure to point that out because we are having to amend the budget for that screen purchase, or the repair parts purchase.
Okay.
So you can vote on it in consent, but if you'd like to pull it out, you can do that to you.
Thank you.
What number is it?
Twelve. Twelve. So do we have a motion to pursue, to approve the consent agenda, item four through 13? Motion by Commissioner Murray. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Tinsley with a second. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signal by raise your hand. Seven zero. Under the regular agenda, item 14 is consider the minutes of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on October 22, 24. Commissioner Ward was absent.
So moved.
Commissioner Tinsley with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six zero one, with Ms. Ward abstaining. And item 15, consider the minutes of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners' workshop meeting on October 22, 24. Commissioner Ward was absent. Do we have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Tinsley with a motion. Commissioner Murray with a second. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six zero one, with Ms. Ward abstaining. Item 16 is consider resolution to amend the City of Griffin's fiscal year 2023-2024 operating capital budgets in the amount of $16,250,293.49, and also amend the fiscal year 24-25 operating capital budget in the amount of $23,194,823.8.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution by Commissioner Murray. Do we have a second?
Second with discussion.
Commissioner Ward with a second and discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Ward.
Okay. Um, I, I, it was my intention to talk to Angela today, but I was otherwise detained with something else, so a lot of the questions that I have on this item, well, I would like to have them addressed tonight. Um, I'm being accused of not knowing what I was talking about, but that's partially true. So in order for me to understand, I need some, some answers. Okay, the money, I was looking, and I had, had Jessica pull me part of the, the budget, of the amendment to, to roll, I guess to roll over to, but I'm, I'm kind of confused because as I was looking at the amendments, there's a lot of different areas that these monies have come from and accumulated to. Um, I'm curious as to no S. to, it was 16,250,293,49, that was left in the budget, that budget, for '23, '24.
Let's see, 420. So you're asking the total amount of the amendment?
I beg your pardon?
So what's left over from '23, '24 is $16,250,000, that number.
That was left from, okay.
Last year.
Okay, so because it hadn't rolled over, how did it get, how did this, it become 23, the, the, the other number that's on here? The two different numbers.
Right, so the other additional amount is the other year-end cleanup, Angela?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, what you're saying is, the first number is year-end cleanup from, from, from the previous year.
Right.
Okay, so how many years previous to that was money rolling over, or not being rolled over, or not being?
Y'all have done rollovers since Angela's been employed?
I believe that we have done rollovers since 2013 or 2014. I started becoming involved in about 2016, and we have rolled, we have rolled funds over every year since, for projects that were started, not completed, or for projects that for some reason got placed on hold. For instance, one of the items here is a fire truck that we purchased and, or issued a purchase order for in 2022. Because of supply chain issues and bill time, that truck is still not delivered and won't be delivered until next year. So those are types of items that we have on the rollover.
Okay, one of the things I was looking at was like ARPA 2021 Fiscal Recovery Fund.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not really sure what, what this means, but it said a budgetary debit, $3,227, and then a budgetary credit from 2021 all the way over to 2025.
Okay. The budgetary debit of $3,227, that is delayed recognition of revenue. Under the Gatsby pronouncements for how we can recognize revenue for grants in this ARPA fund, we cannot recognize the revenue until we have qualified expenditures. So these are the funds that we have not yet expended and fully obligated, that will be obligated within this year. They have to be obligated before December of this year, and spent before?
2026.
2026.
Okay.
So we receive the funds all at once, but we have to place those in a liability account until we have those completely obligated. Then as we obligate them, we pull them out of the revenue, I'm sorry, out of the liability, recognize the revenue and the expenses that go with those.
So you're saying like when it down here where it says grant capital, FAA, what is that?
Okay, that is, in the airport fund, there was a two-phase project for the pavement rehabilitation. The first phase was for engineering and design and preliminary work. The second phase was the $2 million, $2.2 million for actually doing the work of the runway rejuvenation and all of that. Because of some delays in the engineering, that was pushed forward just a little bit more, and it will not occur in 2024 as it was scheduled, but it will start in 2025. That is paid for 90% by federal grant, 10% by state, 2.5% each by, I'm sorry, 90% federal, 5% state, 2.5 each city and county. So in that case, we're recognizing the revenue because that is a reimbursement. The reimbursement will not come in until we've incurred qualified expenditures.
Okay. Um, I see, I see a lot of, a lot of other numbers have budgetary credit, but, um, when, okay, when, when we did, we do our budget, and I remember Jessica saying that, she was having a hard time getting a balanced budget.
Yes.
And that, um, we might have to do a, a millage rate increase.
Okay.
Okay. So if we rolled, I'm confused as to what, okay, if the money rolls over every year, how is that included in the budget? I mean, it, because that's the budget from one year. So it's coming over for, for the next year, as part of the next year, but, next year's budget.
But not at the time that we do the budget. So we don't know what these rollovers are until after last fiscal year ends. So this is not accounted for at all when we're budgeting in March, April, and May for this fiscal year. We hope that a lot of these come off the books before the end of the fiscal year, but sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. So if they haven't by June 30th, then we have to account for them in this upcoming year, and that's what this process is doing right now, because we didn't know that they wouldn't finish when we were doing our budget for this, this fiscal year that we're currently in.
Well, how, okay, so basically what you're saying is, we've been doing this all the time?
We've been doing this for many years now, yes.
Okay, but it just happened we didn't do it last year?
No, we did do this last year. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Another question. Okay. We were having a hard time getting, making the budget balanced. Okay, after the, the budget was balanced, then we, we found money. I'm curious as to where the money came from in order to do the pay study for, and to do the rate, the increases, employee increases.
So the investment accounts is not part of the budget. What you see on that front page of your cash balance report, that $26 million is not part of your budget. That's what you have in investments. So you're not including that as part of your annual budget, operating budget each year. Correct me if I'm saying that wrong.
That is correct. Basically, that is the accumulation of any fund balance increases from prior years, results of investing funds, et cetera. Those would be, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there, but those have already, the revenue that supports the existence of the cash balances has already been realized in some prior period.
Okay, so how many other different funds besides the, like, the one, or did you pull money from more than one? Do we have that maybe everybody else know, that I don't know about, that I don't, that I don't understand?
I'm not exactly sure I'm following you on that.
Okay, you said that these were investment accounts.
So if you, if you go to the front page of your financials, the cash balance?
That's the 930.
It will show you, the first part is total cash, and then it separates it out by funds. And then if you look at the investments, you can see that by certain funds that we have that are investments as well. So some of, you're going to have the budget amendment for the raises, the compensation in particular, at the next meeting in December. And that will show you the different funds that it's coming from. So those that are general fund services like myself, human resources, risk management, police, fire, public works, they will come out of the general fund budget. But the electric raises would come out of the electric fund, water wastewater, so on and so forth. So they each have their own fund that we will account for those, within those funds.
Okay, so is there anything in specific, specifically that these funds can be used for, or, I mean, is there a limitation to what it can be used for? Some of all this other stuff that we have been asking for, are there restrictions about what they can be used for?
It depends on what fund you're talking about. So if you look at your cash balance report, that first page, you can see the first column with the numbers is all the funds as of June 30th. And then if you look at the next three columns, you can see operating, restricted, and reserved. So the restricted amounts are restricted for certain purposes, reserved is the same. Remind me, restricted is, is more restricted. You can only use it for those purposes that it has been set for. Reserved is a little less restricted. But operating is really what you have currently to spend.
Operating, restricted, investment, operating funds is where the money came from for the pay increase?
Only the general fund is coming from an investment account. We're not having to pull anything else out of an investment account. The funds themselves can make up that amount, in the regular electric fund, or the regular water wastewater fund.
So again, the monies that, with the pay increase, which fund did it come from?
It's going to come from several different ones.
Okay, so that means you have, y'all have to take time to go in and put, to figure out where the money, to gather this pool of money?
Right.
Okay, so if you, if the money came from, that's where the money came from this year, the increases are going to be, this, that's going to be every year?
Yes, ma'am.
So basically, what we've done is, we, we obligated ourselves, we didn't have a, call it balance or budget, so we've gone back and made an amendment to do this. So we already have obligated ourselves with funds that are investment funds. So is that how we're gonna do it every year?
In the general, what you're, what you're calling the investment fund and the general fund is your lost money. So you get that every year. It just stays in that general fund investment account. So that's why it has increased so much each year. That's your lost revenue which comes in for the general fund. You just have not removed it from that fund before.
I, I hear what you're saying, and, but I feel like we should have been, well, maybe nobody else, it doesn't bother anybody else, I should have been made aware of, I'm not a novice, I'm a novice when it comes to finance, when it comes to other stuff. But when I took this position, I didn't have to have a degree in anything, you know? That's why we have attorneys, department heads, and managers. And I, I just kind of feel like, I still don't have a problem with the increases, and that whatever issue I have, or whatever it is that I don't understand, I, it is my intention to make sure that before the year starts over, I will understand it, because I will be asking a lot of questions, because I have some concerns. And, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you why. I don't feel like, as a board, and I don't know about anybody else, I had the opportunity to have any input into where else in other areas. We, we are constantly raising rates on one of the last ones we did, which affected the people in the district where I live the most, was yard waste, and a bunch of other stuff that they don't, my folks don't even use. But from my understanding, it was like, we, okay, this helped not to have to raise the millage rate. But I feel like the people in my district, per capita, pays more for utilities and for a whole bunch of other stuff, because you might find eight units, sometimes 30 units, 50 units on two acres of property. That means that everybody in those units are paying utilities. Most of the time, they're really, really high. Nobody thought to ask me or to say, well, what, what do you think, what it is that, that we might be able to do in those areas? And that's why I have a problem with how, like I said, it got by me that time, but it won't get by me no more.
I'm not, I'm not trying to put anything by Ms. Ward. When we did the agenda back in September?
One of the other things was this. All summer long, when I left out my house and went around the corner, it was grass growing up almost over my neck on the easements. If we had, if we had this kind of money and we could find it, why didn't we hire a contracted crew to help beautify, or at least manicure the city easements on the north side, or on the east side?
I did not know that that was a problem. I apologize.
Yeah, you knew, Jessica, because I told you. And I just, like I said, I just feel like something, maybe something I'm missing, but I just feel like the people or the residents in our, in my district, in my district are not getting a fair shake from the city. I feel like, I came into this position 23 years ago, and today, in the last few weeks, I've been feeling just like I felt when I came on. We have evolved back to exactly what it was then, and... We have evolved back to exactly what it was then, and I'm frustrated, disappointed, and I'm not going to, uh, vote for the budget amendment. It's not because it's not gonna happen, but it's because it's in protest, because I just, I just feel like we've been, we've, we've been wrong. I really and truly do. I re- I am so hurt and disappointed because I have been running around telling my constituents all this time, oh, we doing the best, we doing the best, I've been trying to be a team player. I'm done.
You made the second, Ms. Ward. Do you want to keep your second, or do you want to rescind your second?
I want to rescind it.
Okay, we have a motion. I can't read my writing.
Who made the motion?
I, I, I can't read. Okay, I, I could read my writing, I'm sorry. Ms. Murray made a motion. Do we have a second? Holberg will make a second for the resolution for the amended, um, for the, um, resolution to amend the C Griffin's fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four operating capital budget in the amount of sixteen million, two fifty-two ninety-three. All in favor of the resolution, please signal by raising your hand. All against, like sign. Four, three, Curtis, Wright, and, um, Ward voting against. Moving on to item seventeen, consider agreement with Rio Grande Pacific Technology, Inc. to provide engineering services for installation of the North Thirteenth Street Norfolk Southern Wayside Horned System in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars and consider agreement with Pace Book and Associates, Inc. to reimburse the City Griffin or directly pay Rio Grande the same. Do we have motion to approve the agreement?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the agreement, please signal by raising your hand. And all against, like sign. Are you voting for or against, Ms. Rose? You're, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Ward? Yeah, yes? Okay, seven, zero. Item eighteen, consider a property damage release between the City Griffin and Carriage Purchase, Carriage Purchases, Inc. Doing business as P S Logistics, LLC, P S Dedicated, LLC, Jedarius McIntosh and Ace Chubb, LLC in the amount of five thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-one cents and release carriage purchase, Inc., D B A, P S Logistics, LLC, P S Dedicated, LLC, Jedarius McIntosh and Ace Chubb, LLC from any claims, causes of action, or demands for the brick planter that was hit on September seventeen, twenty twenty-four at the intersection of East Solomon Street and South Hill Street.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item nineteen is consider a task order formed with Paragon Consulting Group, Inc. And, and under master service agreement for the sanitary sewer evaluation study in the Potato Creek Sewer Basin in the amount of four hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Do we have motion to approve the task order? Commissioner Tinsley with a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty is consider a contract for an update to the industrial pretreatment program from Goldie Associates Best Responsive Bidder in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Do we have motion to approve the, uh, contract update?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Wright with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-one is consider contract for industrial user permitting from Goldie Associates Best Evaluated Bidder in the amount of four thousand dollars per industry. Do we have motion to approve the contract?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero, approval. Item twenty-one is consider resolution ratifying the rental of Leverer PR seven one six LPG Dozer from national equipment dealers for six months in the amount of forty thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and amend the budget accordingly. Do we have motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion, but that's I- item twenty-two?
Yes. Commissioner Murray made a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-three is consider the purchase of one Vermeer SP X twenty-five drop plow and trailer for fiber insulation and maintenance in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars and twenty-one cents from Vermeer Southeast and ser- in service lowest quote. Do we have motion to approve?
Motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-four is consider the purchase of two ten Kalex Optical Network Terminal Devices from Kalex, Inc. Single source in the amount of forty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty cents for fiber installations and network management. Do we have motion to approve? Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero, approval. Item twenty-five, consider the purchase of a twenty twenty-six Western Star forty-seven X road tractor for the stormwater department in the amount of one hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars from Peach State Truck Center, sole source, and through state contract and amend the budget accordingly.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero, approval. Item twenty-six, consider the twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting schedule as presented.
So moved.
Commissioner Tinsley with a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the calendar, please, of the meeting schedule, please raise your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-sitter is consider cancellation of the scheduled workshop and regular meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion. Do we have the second? Commissioner Wright with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-eight is consider authorizing travel for Mayor Doug Holberg to, to attend the Federal Policy Committee and Legislative Colic- Policy Committee meetings in Atlanta, Georgia on November twentieth and twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Tinsley with a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-nine is consider authorizing travel for Commissioner Rodney McCord to attend the Electric Cities of Georgia Annual Meeting in Greensboro, Georgia on December eighth, eleven, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Are you coming back for that commission meeting, Mr.?
Oh, yeah, that's it, and I'll be back in time for that.
Keep you on your toes. And before we go to executive session, we'll go ahead and have city manager report.
Uh, just a big congratulations to Jenna. What she did was, um, very self, selfless by coming and helping bring the new department out with our wastewater labs. I'm thankful that she was willing to do that. And also just a reminder that Hometown Connections has been postponed. We can only have one of our representatives participate. And so we want to do that at a time that's more beneficial for all three of them. And also, we have our Safety Expo on Thursday at the Kiwanis Fairground, so if you'd like to join us from that. Uh, Mr. Poole has worked very hard on getting that together. Um, it's a fun time from ten AM to two PM. And then also, we have been approached by the county to talk about a potential SPOST referendum in November of twenty twenty-five. So please be thinking about that and what you may feel is needed. We'll talk about it more at your January goals workshop, but I wanted to make sure that you had some time to also be thinking about that if we move forward with that referendum in November. And that is it for me.
Thank you. And the Safety Expo is Thursday week or this coming Thursday?
This coming Thursday.
This coming?
Yes.
And it's at Kiwanis?
At Kiwanis. Ten to two. Lunch will be served.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Whalen? Thank you. Ms. Rex Curtis? Commissioner Murray?
Uh, just good to see everybody. Congratulations, Jennifer. Congratulations to our retired teachers and no further comment.
Thank you. Mr. Tinsley? Commissioner McCord?
Um, I present a proclamation for fifty years of ministry to Ronald T. Adams. Uh, Pastor Ronald T. Adams signed by the mayor, and I presented that, I think it was last Saturday. Wanted to publicly get it in the, in the minutes. They did a proclamation form as well in, uh, Espalina County. I was there for Rita Johnson's outgoing meeting. So I want to thank the mayor and the city manager for that.
Commissioner Wright?
Nothing.
Commissioner Ward?
I have nothing else tonight.
Okay, and I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving so we won't see you again until December. So item thirty is consider executive session pursuant to OCGA Section fifty-fourteen-two-one for the purpose of consulting a meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employer, employee, or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved in pursuit to OCGA Section fifty-fourteen-three-B-two for the purpose of discussing or deliberating upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee. Do we have motion to go into executive session? Commissioner Tinsley with motion, second by Commissioner Murray. Everyone have a safe trip home. Thank you. All in favor, please join us in the background. Do we have motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Commissioner Wright with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner McCord with a second. All in favor of adjourning? Say goodbye-bye. Thank you.
Adios.
Seven sixty.